This meeting is being recorded.
February fourteenth, does anyone want to make a motion to call the minutes?
I move to start the meeting. I move to start the meeting, yeah.
All I see on my screen is Langley Adams Library.
Oh, our videos, oh, okay. Sorry, video got.
Okay, now it's clear. Oh.
It's moved in second.
We're in a spot like this.
Moved in second, go ahead.
All those in favor of Laurel?
Yeah.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Jay?
He's not here.
Mary Lou?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. As the Chair of the Langley Adams Board of Trustees, we welcome you here tonight and open the meeting for the board to listen to your complaints. I'd like to start out by having the board members introduce themselves. My name is Bob Downey, I'm the chairperson.
Hi, I'm Dan Dempsey, I'm the vice chairman. I'm Laurel Pahalvsky, a member right now.
My name's Nancy Hurley, I'm the secretary, so I'll be taking the minutes.
Darcy Lapore, library director.
And Lee Thomas.
And on Zoom, we have Mary Lou. Say something and you'll pop up.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Costello, I'm the treasurer.
Lindsay? And that's a yes, right, Mary Lou?
Yeah.
Lindsay?
Hi, I'm Lindsay Albert, and I'm one of the newest members, and I'm just a member.
Yes?
Yes, we already voted.
Yeah.
Okay, that's right. Who am I looking for now?
Kathleen Perneer. Kathleen Perneer, member of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, let's start with the session. Please be aware that the subject at hand has a bearing on personnel and confidential matters, and therefore, we will not be making any comment. We ask that your comments be orderly and respectful of others. Also, please try to limit your comments to two minutes. When you come up to make your comments, if you could please state your name and address, we will start with the in-person comments and then move on to the Zoom comments. As respect Zoom, until we go to get your comments, you'll be muted. So don't think you're knocking out of the thing, because it's very concerning on Zoom if other activities going on, so. We open up the meeting for your comments, and we like to have whoever wants to come up first. Test the waters, and then. I stand right in front of her, you've got a little hour.
I'm gonna turn my back to you guys.
And you're up there.
Oh.
So they can see you.
Good evening, my name's Adriana Woods, I reside at six fifty-two Salem Street here in Groveland. I'm gonna open up comments by reading a joint letter to the library trustees from one hundred and eighty-eight residents of Groveland so far, although there might be more signing on as we speak. This is actually addressed to the Board of Trustees, Select Board, and Rebecca Oldham, the town administrator. Members of the Board of Trustees, Select Board, and Town Administrator Oldham, over the course of the last year and a half, the residents of our small town have watched as the Langley Adams Library has grown into a vibrant hub for education and enrichment due to the efforts of our new youth services librarian Bergen Daly. In Bergen's short time with the library, our children and community have benefited immensely from her complete overhaul of the program and launching of the library services to new heights. Just a few of her contributions to the town have included collaborating with town leadership to bring unique and highly attended events to the town, doubling in-kind donations, developing at least twelve new ongoing programs and special events for youth of various ages at no cost to families, including candle-making, STEM club, chess club, Dungeons and Dragons club, afternoon, and many more. As you all know, designed and implemented a summer reading program, served as grant writer, creator, and project director for Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners, twenty twenty-three Mine in the Making Grant, which was just awarded to the Langley Adams Story and Play Program to benefit early childhood patrons, and quadrupled annual community participation and attendance, which is self-outfitting. And all of that was in the first eighteen months of Bergen's time with Groveland. It should have just been the beginning of a long and amazing tenure with the town library. Maybe it still can be. Despite Bergen's dedication to our community and passion for enriching children and families, she felt no choice but to put in her notice last month and give up a job that she loves after exhausting all efforts to seek help resolving a toxic workplace environment within the library. It's obvious that where Bergen goes, progress engagement grows. She's a boat rocker and innovator, and her work ethic is unmatched. You will hear tonight many testaments from Groveland parents about how her passion and efforts helped their children, their families, and their communities. It's no secret that innovators and boat rockers can be met with resistance. While we all saw the library flourishing from the outside, tensions with the library director built up within the walls of the library. Through Bergen's tenure, she routinely and professionally reached out to the town administrator and trustees with her concerns about library management. By January twenty twenty-four, Bergen requested mediation, which both the trustees and town administrators supported. The library director chose not to participate. At that point, the library trustees, which is the sole authority over the director and made up of citizen volunteers, do you know, declined to take any further action. After the director unilaterally prevented mediation from moving forward and with no other avenues to pursue for support, Bergen, one of our town's highest performers and most passionate contributors, put in her notice in order to preserve her mental health. It's important to note that Groveland, under the current library director, has gone through three youth services librarians in five years. There is no system of checks and balances if the director position, position, is exempt from meaningful professional oversight similar to other department heads in Groveland. Open-ended authority in this position must end, whether through enforcement of the current bylaws or change to the bylaws. Dozens of long-term Groveland residents will attest to the fact that the children's library program and the library in general has transformed from a lackluster program into a popular and flourishing one under Bergen. The mismanagement that forced her out is the cherry on top of the situation that has been festering for a long time. We request three things: that the library trustees immediately invite Bergen to return to her position to the library with the guarantee that they will enforce mediation with the director. Should the director not exhibit good faith in mediation efforts, the library trustees exercise their right to enforce disciplinary action. And the library trustees support a proposed amendment to the bylaws to transfer professional oversight of the director's role to the town administrator and select board in time to be placed in the ballot for town meeting on April twenty-second. I think that date is wrong, it's a week later. Close the loophole, institute a common sense system of oversight, and extend an offer to return to Bergen, one of the most valuable resources that Groveland has. Our town and our children deserve it, thank you. I thought you were responding.
Did you get a copy of that?
Oh, yes, you can.
At some point. I'm breaking my own rules, but this is, seems like it's a highlight. Next person would like to speak?
Mac.
Hi, I'm Beth Griehagen, Seven Star Road. Most of today's speakers will be about what a fantastic children's librarian Bergen Daly was, and I concur. But I will instead focus on how the library is run. What is the supervision of the director? The boards by law state the board shall have care, custody, and control of the library holdings, including conducting annual reviews of the director. I know there is a review of her proposed budget, but is there any supervision of her daily duties, your interactions with her support audience, and the public? I understand that the Board of Trustees is a group of volunteers, so why should supervision fall on your shoulders? Are any of you paid as a boss? I feel like if the director had been more closely supervised, Ms. Daly's concerns would have been addressed more quickly, and hopefully, in some cases, actually fixed. There's nothing in the Groveland Employee Manual nor the Langley Adams Code of Conduct about mediation. Though the Groveland Employee Manual has an anti-discrimination and harassment section, in the Langley Adams Code of Conduct has a workplace civility statement. I think that the lack of employees' right to mediation should be addressed as soon as possible, as I believe every employee, but especially municipal employees, have a right to mediation. There have been three children's librarians in the past five years. Doesn't that give you pause? What is going on that's leading to all these librarians leaving? I think, and I believe I have the support of the many constituents here tonight, that the bylaws need to be updated immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's something.
Who would like to be next?
Oh, at some point Sean wants to speak, so let me know when that's, okay. Yep.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much for your time. My name's Dreia Rhodes, I am a resident at one eighty-one School Street in Groveland. I've been in town for eight and a half years, and I have an amazing son, Landon, who's seven. We've been going to the library for almost a year and a half now, and I can honestly say that it has transformed my family's engagement in this town. And I do owe all of that, I do thank, to Ms. Bergen. My son is not a sports kid, every single one of his friends are. So playdates are even harder during the week when kids are at practice, and we found our home away from home at the library. We do STEM club, afternoon, book club, chess club, and my son always leaves here with a smile and a good positive interaction with an adult librarian who actually sparked, thank you, his interest in reading, that's his sign. So to find a home away from home and a child who can't find his place in sports has been phenomenal. And to see that someone had to leave under basically a policy of everything you just said, whoever was just up, there is no grievance policy that I see. I've worked at a lot of businesses, attended nonprofits, a college, and I've never seen that type of protocol or process for an employee to be under. And I'm a huge volunteer, I'm the president of the PTA co-president, so I thank you so much for all your volunteer work, I can't imagine. It's hard to take on a role like that and be a leader in the community, so I do hope that our asks tonight are thoughtful in what we said, and you're thoughtful in answering them. I am one of the one hundred and eighty-eight signatures on that, and I am also a co-signer on that last letter. That was absolutely amazing for the professionalism that should be going on, I think, at this institution. And I will just say, I think that if we don't have a librarian, Ms. Bergen or Ms. Bergen, our children are all gonna be at a huge disadvantage. And I will say, the only other two activities my son can do cost me three hundred and twenty dollars a month. I work two jobs, my husband works one, so again, having a library with a librarian that does intentional programming for all of our ages and keeps in mind our schedules and keeps in mind our students' passions and knows every single one of them by name, it's very hard to come by, and I don't think we're gonna get that opportunity again. Thank you.
Who's ready next? I want to speak, come on up.
We'll do in-person first, or do you want?
Oh, okay. Come on. Yeah, I'm standing right here.
It's okay. Okay. Carrie Zignelke, six, Oak Valley Park.
See it.
Oh, the parkers. It says Langley Adams means Ms. Bergen. Last year, I had the privilege of getting to stay home, because I had my third, Jack is out there. And Ms. Bergen was like the light that a stay-at-home mom needed, and when she came to the library and like knows no judgment, I felt like I could come here with all three of them, and my toddler is wild. She would see him calling me a nickname, the Todd Villa. He would come in here, and I'd like sweating, because I was like, oh my God, he's destroying everything. She's like, don't worry about it, like she was so engaging with my kids. The three of them always wanted to come here, and just walking and seeing her face was just like what we needed. And especially like those rainy, snowy days when we really couldn't do anything else. She always had engaging, I remember one instance, I was the only family that showed up for a program, and I looked at her, I was like, you don't have to run this for the three of them, I can just take out some books. She's like, no, I'm gonna do it. She sat all three down in a circle, she did the storytime, and then she even still did all the centers with them. I mean, who does that? Like, I gave her the out, I was like, I'll just do something and we'll go home. She'll like, no, like, this is what I wanna do. And that's just a testament, I guess, of who she is, like, this is truly something she is passionate about. And you look at her, she's still here and wants to be here, even though with all this going on, so. That's it. So, I know that was.
Good evening, my name is Lauren King, and I reside at one twenty-nine Main Street, and I appreciate you allowing us to come and provide feedback and for all the work that you do as volunteers, it's really appreciated. I wanted to share that. I moved. And I have my son in twenty eighteen, he's five years old. And I sense about a daughter, and we ended up coming to the library a couple of years ago to have that one-on-one time with my son, which was wonderful. And once we started to come to the library, we observed an immediate shift as to our experiences before. Ms. Bergen knew our names, once she knew our names, she never forgot it. She engaged with my son so well, and we had so many wonderful memories of all the storytimes that she created. And also, I will say, I've never experienced a library in which the storytimes would fill up, the registrations would book in advance, especially those Saturday storytimes or those holiday storytimes. She created an atmosphere that was incredibly welcoming and became a really safe spot for my son and I to have one-on-one time. And I also have memories of thinking I was bringing one of my children, but I ended up bringing two. And my daughter was a little bit too young for that specific event, and Bergen just chimed right in and helped out as she did with all the parents and caretakers to make sure that it was a wonderful environment in which families could really just have that open door environment and saw that shift, and I felt so lucky and so many wonderful memories of being able to scooter and walk down to the library and have that amazing experience here. I appreciate the opportunity for us to provide feedback. To me, it feels as though county agencies and all employers really need to be able to foster environments where not only community members feel comfortable coming and having safe experiences, but environments where employers can thrive and employees can thrive and have those difficult conversations that you need to have as employees and employers, as I'm sure many of you are. I'm a manager in my professional life, and that's a hard job to do, is to manage people. But part of managing people is providing that oversight, allowing opportunity for difficult conversations, but conversations in which you can work through differences and be able to keep employees and also understand that there are often differences, but making sure that in all agencies, employers, especially places like a public library, that we can foster that environment where employees feel safe coming forward with concerns and being able to really keep keep those employees that are thriving and creating such wonderful environments. So I agree with all the former statements and signed on to that letter and hope that you all will consider those asks so that all the families that signed on to that letter can continue to enjoy the impact that we've all endured over the past several years. Thank you so much.
The floor is open.
Bob, point of order, Mr. Chair, would you want to take some, someone that's called in? We have people, residents who have called in.
Kathy, we decided we're gonna do people here first, and anybody who's on the outside Zooming will do them after.
Oh, okay.
Thank you all for your time, Danielle Burns, I live at one seventy Washington Street. I've been in the community now for over three and a half years, prior coming from Lynn, where we had a really robust library, the programming was great, it was a place for the kids to be together, to get, you know, to not be in trouble. But we don't really have a community center in this town, and the library is becoming the community center, but we don't have great weather to be at the pines. This is something that I've really fallen in love with, and my kids have loved the programming. They, in the summertime, they get to sit outside and do storytime, and they get to be kids, and draw her on the walls with chalk. And to let them be children for this very small time that they have and the programming that has been brought to them, they still talk about doing DNA extractions. My kids at the time were six and seven, and how incredible to have that in our community, other community members with special skills and talents coming in and sharing that with our kids. So because we don't have a community center, this has become our community center. It was pretty loud in there, and we want that to continue, we want that joy and that robustness where our families can feel welcome. I just asked a few of the kids just a few minutes ago, you know, what their feelings were, and a few of them said, she's really nice and a good person to talk to. I was depressed when she quit. She means a lot to the childrens. For kids, they don't always feel comfortable talking to their parents, and we want them to have somebody that they can reach out to, that they can feel comfortable to talk to. I don't care whether you talk to me or my husband or my friends, but I want you, if my kids are feeling uncomfortable, to have an adult that they can look up to and just feel comfortable to share any, any thoughts. I was able to attend a talk on suicide awareness and prevention, and I think that's one of those things that I've learned and took away from it as a parent was, I don't care who you talk to, but reach out if you're feeling uncomfortable. If you want, if you need to talk to an adult, it has to be somebody, anybody, and that's what she means to these kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello. See, you'll step a little back.
Maybe so, am I too tall?
There you go, even better.
I'm Liz Jones, I'm on Dwayne Street, I've been a Groveland resident since two thousand nine. I work for the MBLC system, I've worked in three different libraries in MBLC, including here. That was about ten-ish years ago. One of the things that kind of, that I realized going through the past week and a half was that I had stopped coming here. Before Bergen became an employee, we stopped coming here. We went to West Newbury, Newbury, Newbury Port, Amesbury, we went everywhere. I felt as a patron, a lack of professionalism in here. I was made to feel uncomfortable several times, and it wasn't until Bergen started working here that I thought I should bring my kids back here. I mean, we came, I avoided it if I could. And that's just really become apparent to me, I didn't really think of that pattern until the last week and a half, and yeah, you know, I I removed myself from an uncomfortable situation where I was, I don't know, Bergen made all the difference, we started coming here again, I brought my kids back for the programming. I started helping with some of the programming, and that's been fantastic for me and hopefully for the kids involved. So I just wanted to say that, like, I felt professional, I felt a lack of professionalism as a patron. And I'd like for everyone who comes into the library to feel that they're safe and comfortable with everyone, with every interaction. And that's what I, I felt like we always got that with Bergen. And I think that's all I have to say. I run out of words.
Who else would like to come up and speak? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, welcome. Are you gonna speak as a group or individual? Okay, do we have individual names?
I'm Stella.
I'm Anna.
I'm Brooke.
Can we follow up with your address?
Me and Brooke, that's twenty-nine Red Street, Groveland, Massachusetts. And Anna, I'm, remember? Groveland Commonsway.
Oh, you're from Groveland, good for you. Okay.
Bergen made reading fun, and it made us want us one back every day.
Thank you, can we just clap? Thank you.
Ms. Bergen meant, oh, yeah, my name's Edie, and I'm there in Groveland Commonsway. Bergen meant a lot to me, especially during the times where I was bored and didn't know what to do with myself. I came to the library a lot. Practically like every other day to every day, and she'd always be ready with something for me to do, whether it is to organize books, make bookmarks, make to-go art kits, whatever it was, she was always ready with something for me to do, and it was a great way for me to spend my time, both helping out a place that I would really enjoy for other kids to enjoy, and a place that I enjoy being in. And Ms. Bergen has really made that a possibility for me and really made it into a very big part of my life as I have lived in Groveland.
Thank you. Since I have started.
My name's Savannah Feedy.
Yes. Groveland, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's good.
So whenever I come to the library, even though I don't come often, she's always waiting there, and she has book suggestions, and it always makes me so happy to see her, because I know it's a familiar place. And once I came here with a book suggestion for the library, I started reading a book called, the abolition was called Burning Tate. Personally, I really liked the book, and I also got a sequel to the book. And I noticed that the library didn't have the sequel. So I suggested if they bought the sequel, so. She helped make that happen, and I think it's lovely that now they have a new book and.
It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Irene Andrade, I am from Nine Merritt Avenue here in Groveland, and just a couple of comments. Everything everyone has mentioned about Ms. Bergen is true, there's nothing to take away. I came and I met Ms. Bergen, I've come to the library before, I've been a member here since twenty nineteen, and I've come to a library before, and it was lackluster, right, no acknowledgement, no welcoming environment. So I would just come, grab my books, and leave. I came to meet Ms. Bergen at one of the girls' scout events where she organized to help my daughter, who is still a full member, to get a badge. And that was great, because, because of her friendship and her kind demeanor, I started coming back. And she always provided a welcome space, as everyone has mentioned, provided great recommendations. But one thing I don't want to lose sight of is maybe there were difficulties in the library. And I'm not surprised if people say negative things about Ms. Bergen. But one thing I hope the trustees acknowledge is the amount of positive things that the community has said about Ms. Bergen. And this is not a matter of, you know, is she good or is she bad? She needed the support she requested from her working life, that's really the case. And I hope that she's able to get that, if she's able to be acquainted again, to have the opportunity to make this town flourish and be welcoming as it was while she lived here. But also gives not only her, as another member has mentioned, not only her, but every, every employee here, the opportunity to seek and find remediation when it's needed.
Thank you. Who would like to be next? Hello, good evening. You're gonna be up on the camera, so you can speak. What's your name? That's good by me. Okay.
My name, I believe I mentioned that. So Ms. Bergen, she's always really nice.
Ms. Bergen, she's always really nice and she's always kind. She, um, whenever I'm not there and like my family goes, she always helps. Um, she knows, she knows what I like and she'll help me pick out books I like. And she knows how I like.
Thank you. We'd like to be next. Anybody? Uh, the library wanna come in?
Tiffany Kledji, um, Rocky Woods Road. So I have been going back and forth in the back because I want to speak to how amazing Ms. Bergen is and the incredible things that she's done for most of my boys. I think everybody here has done a great job in the letter that was read. I signed off on that. I think a couple of comments have been made about the environment for Ms. Bergen. But I'm a factual person. I like to have data, so I want to provide that. I have two examples actually of my experience here in the library for Ms. Bergen and one of them, she was here, but I had brought my youngest with me and he was in the kid's room. He was five at the time and I had to take a work call. So I sat at one of the tables over there. And the director took my son out of the kid's room and stood two feet away from me while I was on the work call that I needed to stop to let me know that he couldn't be unsupervised in the kid's room. I didn't know that rule. He was in there by himself, very quiet, wasn't doing anything he shouldn't have. He was just sitting there reading a book. But is that really something that has to go on? Like, is that the environment that is welcoming and is showing the community, like, yes, come in, you can have somewhere for your kid to be. They can read the books, enriching reading, but then also supporting a mom who has to work while her kids at home. That was not the environment that I wanted to be in, but then Ms. Bergen came in and that all changed. But another example of what else is going on here in the library? Um, I got hurt here about five weeks ago. Um, I got a concussion. It was pretty bad. And nobody came to assist at all, but Ms. Bergen, who was in here running a class for the kids, which one of my kids was in here for the class. There was no support in the rest of the library. I mean, there was a scene, there was blood, like, it wasn't like it was a quiet situation. There was no assistance by any other library employees. She had to step out of the room that she was in with the kids. And so that to me is disturbing, that there's no action by any other employees in the library. But to Ms. Bergen, she actually called me the next day to check in on me. Like, that's incredible. She didn't need to do that, like. And the fact that she wanted to ensure that I went to the hospital because she was adamant about me having catching, which I did have. Uh, but I was saying that I didn't. Um, just goes to show the importance the community is to her as well as she is to us. And we don't have that here. That, that's not something that the library is providing at this time without her here. And that's very, very, very upsetting.
I'm sorry. I missed your name.
So who would like to be next? Do you want to give anybody on the link a chance, Bob? Uh, does anyone else want to speak? Otherwise, we're gonna go.
My neighbor, I don't think she's here, but her son is fourteen and she said that she cannot believe how Ms. Bergen has truly found the passion of that age. We're gonna try and bring them in and she's like reached out or mountain biking and other things. Video games to see how to get that age group here. And that's, I mean, you don't see that a lot of libraries. Most of them are generally the younger populations, so trying to get them to work. Like I said, someone is, if there isn't a community center, that's right. So that to me too speaks volumes. Like, she's trying to see how could she bring in more people or more kids to like foster a virus.
Get bonus points.
I have ten more seconds because I didn't bring my kid. I'm so sorry. I wanted to bring my kid and me and my husband were like, I don't know. Um, so this is on behalf of Landon. He's seven and he also lives at one eighty-one School Street. He wanted me to say two. Um, sorry, he cried when I told him, so that's why I'm so emotional. And he doesn't cry, but he was very upset. Just why I didn't bring him. The two things he wanted to say is, one, I tried to find a chess club, again, not a sports kid, for Landon for six months and no one would let him play because he was only seven. I called every library all the way down to PBD and the only one that would take him was PBD and it was the same night as jujitsu. So I called Ms. Bergen, actually like really upset at the other libraries that were ju- and my son is quiet and he doesn't do anything wrong. He just listens to the worlds and no library would give him a shot. So Ms. Bergen made a chess club with us. She worked a night, let me and my husband volunteer and made it happen. And it ended up, the middle school ended up taking it over because it was so successful. And all those unsports kids ended up being able to do it. Also, Ms. Bergen knows that I'm always upset that I can't get my kid into anything because there's nothing going on, stepping to the community center. So she also shares all the other Groveland community resources. She is the reason that the V C Park Fashion Show had about five other models in it this year. She is the reason my son was a designer at age seven and guess who had to model? Um, it was me. Um, so I think that in case anyone is gonna speak to the other side of this matter, I think that as a mom and for my son, she's the easiest person to collaborate her. She's the biggest cheerleader and she's a partner to everyone in this town. Um, not just us parents and us kids, and I think that's really important. And I promised him I'd say that. So that was Landon's comment. I have one more comment to make on this.
Oh, oh. I just put my foot in my big mouth.
I did read the letter, which was signed by a hundred and eighty-eight residents. I did just want to share a personal anecdote from my family as well. I have two sons, one who's eight years old and has ADHD and the other one who is four years old. Uh, and has come a long way, but was diagnosed with a receptive and expressive language disorder, both of which have participated in the programs that Bergen has run here. My younger son, the four-year-old, who you know Matthew, um, by name, of course. Um, it, when we, when he first started coming to the library, he was more comfortable with like the babies and younger toddlers who might have been a little bit younger than him. And Bergen was always very understanding of the fact that he was more comfortable with the younger kids because he did have a language disorder that prevented him from fitting in with his peers. Um, and was extremely supportive of that, helpful with him, uh, commented to me about the progress he was making week to week. Uh, my older son who had ADHD, not always the easiest kid in book club to keep sitting and focused. Um, and I was always right there in book club or sometimes they'd have book club in here and I was out. And when I wasn't in here with them, Bergen would report to me his progress, the great, um, advancements he was making with his reading, that they were working on, keeping his hands to himself. She had and has a fantastic way with kids who are different. Um, of being assertive in terms of these are the rules and this is how we act and this is how we do and don't treat your neighbors and your friends. But also being kind and being loving and giving them what they need. Um, not always just what they want. And, and Christian did not want to do book club when I found him out. He that I hate book club, I hate reading, I don't want to go. And by the time he had his last book club, he was excited to come. He felt seen, he felt heard. He actually felt confident to volunteer to read on his own in front of other children, which was amazing that he even wanted to read and raise his hand. And we, um, just thank Bergen for that, for bringing them out in them. Um, and it's really touched our family and, and helped my children.
Point of order, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, point of order. We have people that have been waiting to speak on Zoom as long as the people who are here. We need to give them a chance to speak, please.
Is anyone else present, wants to speak? If you can come up now and so I can know what we're going through. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go with two more and then we're gonna go online.
Hi, my name's Lisa Boulay. I live at twenty-nine Moon Street, um, here in Groveland. I want to thank all of you for being present and listening to our concerns. I'm a volunteer myself and what you do is immeasurable. Um, I'd like to highlight a few things that I've seen happen since Bergen's arrived. Tonight's conversation isn't exclusive to her, but the greater need of our community. But as a volunteer myself, I've seen partnerships and Girl Scouts through the town hall, through police department visits, through the schools, through the schools for behavioral needs. Some of our grade levels are in complete crisis right now. And parents have had a struggle finding resources of how to communicate with their children in crisis or good feelings or things of that nature. And we weren't making headway outside of here. So she brought in sponsors and provided resources for us. That was game changing. Um, another example is V C Park Partnership, reaching out to CPAC, which is a special education parent advisory council, which serves children of all needs, including one of mine. Clemensy Music, Bag Now PTA, area private preschools and public preschools. Those are just a few of the things. She's proactive and anticipates the needs. That is something that can't just be filled by anybody in a job or a role. That's why I think you've seen numbers quadruple. Um, she has pulled some of the community. Um, she helps us with our challenges. Like, for instance, when she heard about the academic and learning environments that were going on for our children in crisis at our public school. Oh, had displays. We're on it. Had displays of feelings and topics that were relevant, right? So when the kids would go in the library, could find those resources at their level and subsequently have resources at the parent level. My child would come in, I have three very active children. Knew their names, knew what they liked to read and would help find the resources. To me, that's, that never happened before. Um, additionally, where I live, all the houses are sort of recessed and even if you go for a walk, you might not see a neighbor. I literally met them at the bus stop and formed a community because I invited different age kids. One is a single parent. One is living with grandparents with a different life background. Another one's similar. All of them that now come to the library as a resource and we have developed our own neighborhood community that started literally at programming at this library. That's what it means to Groveland. Also, I want to acknowledge the robust literacy program and the schools currently don't have a summer suggestive reading list for their students. That advocacy was being pursued and already underway in January to happen for this year. Um, I think that in itself. Um, also, we've been in here, my kids love to do the take and make crafts. And she heard their joy, saw the volunteer, the volunteer, I believe her name was Joan, happened to be here, went out there and said, Joan, come meet these kids. They are so excited about the take and make. She took the time to appreciate that. I have a child who has special learning needs and needs to take their time when it comes to do a program. And we felt supported and not rushed and welcomed every single time. I'm like so emotionally apologizing. Um, I'll also say, I've heard feedback through certain people that because a lot of us patrons feel so strongly about the impact Bergen's need. And you, there's been also commentary about us not feeling welcome here. And I can attest to that personally for reasons I've emailed you all, so please go back and read my email. I didn't name people. I could, I, I don't want to go that route. It's not, that's not the goal. However, I think it's important to know that just because people didn't speak up, doesn't mean it wasn't a problem. Instead, we want to celebrate the greatness of what has happened with the change of the library and, um, continue that pattern. And I think she's the person to do it. And I think, welcome the conversation on a grander scale. And if you want to know about those incidences, I will gladly share them with you at another time. But I left this library for years and went elsewhere and would tiptoe to come in and check out books and that was it. And this was transformative for myself and many others. So I thank you. It's annoying to say, interesting.
I'll be fast, you know, mostly reiterating what people are saying. I'm Sue P M O. One twenty-seven Main Street. Um, so we walked to the library, deeply walking library for a couple of years since Bergen's been here. Before that, when I bring my children for toddler time and stuff, like, we tried this library on a number of occasions and we never felt welcome. I felt like I was walking on eggshells. If I brought my children here, I would get dirty looks from the staff. It felt very uncomfortable. So we went to the past our library, we went to West Newbury Library, we went other places, which was really sad because they're so close. Um, but since Ms. Bergen came, um, I have a third grader who's, um, uh, she's a reluctant reader. It's taken her a long time to get into reading. She's still a little slow, but, um, the summer reading program that Ms. Bergen taught here was amazing. It got her reading as many books as I've never seen her into reading before this happened. Um, and a lot of that was also the wonder books that Ms. Bergen brought into our library, which are books that you can listen to. So she can listen and read along, which also helped her reading immensely. Um, but yeah, I know the summer reading program where they had to fill out a list. Once they did their list, they brought it in, they got their prize, but she kept it going. It wasn't just ten books. Anytime you brought in another list with another ten books, you got another little quote in the pride. So they just kept reading and it was so amazing. So, and it's just, it was nice to actually feel like the library was willing to help.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna switch now to online comments. And this may be tricky.
Sean was one.
Okay.
He was the first one. And Lindsay has something from CJ.
Okay. So can you unmute Sean?
Yep, ask to unmute. Sean, you're up.
Hi, my name is Sean Hood. Um, I live in Groveland at fourteen Yale Street. I recently moved on from working at the library because I want to focus more on my, um, education as a journalism major at Northern Essex. That's actually where I am right now. Um, I stepped out of class because I really care about what's being discussed at this meeting. And, um, all that said, I would like to shine a light on my former boss, Darcy LaBour, the library director. Darcy, I love you so much, um, as a friend and an employee who helped me grow a lot as an autistic young adult in the modern workplace. Um, first off, I just want to say that Darcy has been very supportive and accommodating to me. I am high functioning with autism and Darcy has helped me a lot by taking into account my specific ways of communicating, as well as the types of things that make a task difficult for me to navigate and complete. She's given me to-do lists for certain days and as time went on, the to-do lists became less detailed because um, the need to remind me about distractions ha- have, became a little, um, not as necessary because, um, so the email to-do list became less detailed because I was getting into the habit of, of, um, putting together a better work ethic for myself. And, um, Bergen, you've helped me a lot with that too. Thank you very much. Um, but something I wanted to mention about mediation and what it, what it is. Um, I, I wasn't familiar with the concept of mediation or the, just the term, but, um, if we, if we're gonna go into talk about the mediation that was requested by Bergen, um, I would like to say that this past spring, it was around May, I think I want to say, I was, um, a little out of control at work with certain things that I wanted to do for the library. It wasn't really my place to, step on the toes of the full-time librarians, Bergen being one of them. Um, there was a bit of the conflict between me and Bergen. I was just trying to explain some feelings to her and it wasn't really going well. So I, without using the word mediation, again, I wasn't familiar with that term. I asked Darcy, my former boss, the director, she's here, she's there with you. Darcy, can I meet with you and Bergen to discuss, um, the conflict that we had, just everything that was going on? And she said, is that what you would want to do? And I, I said, yes, I want to meet with you and Bergen. I think that would help me to talk about it. And Bergen and I chatted about it instead, just one-on-one, wh- when we were leaving for the day, which I guess that was fine, but what really happened before that, before we got to actually touch base about it, just because time allowed, she legitimately declined the mediation between, that I requested between me and Bergen and Darcy. That only added to my anxiety. Yes, the anxiety was alleviated once Bergen kind of tried to clear things up with me one-on-one, like we were closing up for the day because we were the only two people in the building just because time had allowed for that. But, um, yeah, um, as time went on, Darcy really helped me a lot with everything. And, um, I think that I can definitively say that, um, my last day at the library was before I knew Bergen was gonna leave. But what I will say was that, um, from the time I worked at the library, from some From summer two thousand twenty one, um, yeah, tw-. Summer two thousand twenty one until this past January, I can definitively say that the staff. The library has lost during my time working there. So not a few days later when Bergen resigned. I can't speak for that. I wasn't in the building. I don't know what happened. But. I can definitively say that the staff of library has lost, had lost. Had nothing to do with Darcy or any management that was going on. When Bergen came into the picture, Darcy started providing the rest of the staff feedback because. Um. We just, when it, whenever it was needed and in fear of retaliation, many of the staff members. Found it difficult in general to give Bergen feedback. Um. Or. For anyone to give Bergen feedback, I would assume, uh, because that's how I felt. The staff appreciated how good her. Programming was, didn't want to jeopardize that for the community in um, giving her feedback that she wouldn't really be able to take well. Um, I'm not talking about the programming and stuff, but just interpersonal stuff, communication and um, things like that. Um, some people are just not easy to work with. I guess that's what I'll say. Um. In the end, things became easier for us to do things the way Bergen wanted, um, than to ever suggest anything different because. Um, otherwise the team dynamics would have fractured further since, um, like they had been. Since Bergen had came, came into the picture. So that's my perspective as a former staff member and um. As I understand that a lot, a lot of um. A lot of. Parents and families have benefited from the youth services that have been provided at the Groveland Library, but um. I know Dreya said that um, a disadvantage to the children has, has come into the picture with Bergen's absence, but I think. There will be, there will be an extreme disadvantage to the well-being of the staff and the library as a whole, not just youth services, the library as a whole and the staff as a whole. If Bergen. Comes back into the picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
So I'm. Lindsay is next. So the CJ's response should be next because that's the next one I. Saw.
You ready?
Yep.
Alright, so CJ wrote this. He said, um, if you don't know CJ, he's my thirteen-year-old son. He's been going to the library forever. Um, so he just said, um, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the library in general. And the director, Darcy. I have been walking with my mom to the library since I was three. The first person I remember playing with there was Darcy, when she used to be the children's librarian. She was fun and a great listener. I remember going to play bubbles on the lawn, holding a giant snake and even dressing up as Captain Hook for a Peter Pan party. The library has always felt welcoming and I don't think that will ever change. I hope everyone in the community is happy with how things work out. The library keeps being a place where kids can go. And play and be safe. And that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
If you want to speak. Uh, I see Liz Zimmerman. I'll unmute her.
Hi, uh, Liz Zimmerman, Elizabeth Zimmerman, nineteen Pandora. Uh, I've lived in Groveland. I'll try to make it quick. Piggybacking on what a lot of people said. I've lived in Groveland almost seven years. Um, we, the first place we went. When we moved here was the library. I had a two and a, two-month-old uh, looking for programs. We were well received. Everyone was very friendly and then the programs just kind of died. Uh. There wasn't really anything going on. I think there, and then a. Children's director came on, things were good for a little bit and then she left and then another, there was a gap. We all know the story. Um, we had to shop around to other libraries. Uh. Found good programs, whatever. If anyone knows me, I'm a talker and I tend to ask a lot of questions. Um, I spoke to two previous staff members way before any of this ever happened years ago. Um, after they left and they told me it was just not a great place to work and. Um, it was very toxic. They didn't go into too many details. But they basically said it wasn't great. And I said, you know, I really wish that. Just for the kids at least. I am fine. I'm an adult. I can go in and get a book. Um, but for the kids at least. And once Bergen came, um. My God, my kids were happy to go to the library again and they were happy that we didn't have to drive twenty minutes to the library. And then it was right here in town and they were happy that people knew their names. They were happy that um, Bergen. My daughter's in kindergarten and. The books that she recommended really brought her out of her shell. They've made her a great reader. And then on a personal level, I was having. Parenting problems uh, with my kindergartner going through a lot of emotions and. I asked for help and she gave me such great guidance and provided books. And uh, when other things happened with my kids, um, questions, I often reached out to her and she provided me books. On top of all the other programs, um, when I told my kids that. Uh, she was gone. I mean, they cried. Uh, when I told them that the book club was not going to meet, my daughter sobbed. She's like, but it's fun. And to hear a kindergartner say, I want to go to a book club and it's fun. It really means something. Um, I hope this can be resolved for the good of the community. Um, I don't know what goes behind the scenes. I'm not going to pretend to. I can assume, but. As a parent. And as my kid's speaking to me, Bergen did wonders for the community, for the kids and for the library. And that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you? Um.
Anyone else?
Can you do the hand raise emoji if you want to speak?
Can they all hear you, Darcy?
I think so. Uh, if you want to speak, can you do the hand raise emoji?
Just to be safe, why didn't we unmute everyone? Do that?
Do real?
Well, because.
Okay.
We got this.
Okay. Um. Sure.
We go down the list and just unmute them and then ask.
I am.
Then you have to leave that up so that you can see if somebody asked for a raise.
Well, I am. I asked a bunch of people to unmute. Can you, can you get to the?
Hello?
Just see if anybody.
Is anyone on the line?
They're all on the line. Ask if they want to speak.
Please speak if you would like to for us to hear your comments.
Yeah, I can speak. I'll, I'll speak before, before the meeting ends. My name's Ashley Christensen. Um, I live at two seventeen Center Street and. I just want to kind of echo what I've heard a lot of people in the in-person meeting and on the Zoom, um. Talking about is just how welcoming um, an environment we've had, that has been made for my daughter. Um. Sorry, I wasn't, I was going to speak, so I'm kind of just trying to get my thoughts together, but my daughter's two and a half and even just in the week that Bergen's been gone from the library. There's been a, a noticeable change in the atmosphere. Um, we've come back because my daughter, we take out probably twenty, thirty books a week from the library. Um, and just in, in the week that Bergen has been gone, there's just been a noticeable change in the children's room. Nothing has been moved or stocked. Um, you know, when we would come in and Delilah would always get a sticker upon leaving that she would always have Bergen reading her by name as she came into the library. Um, and it was just a really welcoming experience. And so I just wanted to speak to that quickly. Um, but that's all I really, I think I have to contribute. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
Anyone else like to speak? How can I tell who's on? Who's Sam's on?
I think you can also unmute themselves.
So are we going all the way down?
I guess so.
I did, yeah, click it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, unless there's anyone else here who hasn't spoken, uh, okay. Your name and address, please?
I guess Andrea, um. On Nightmare F, I just want to say how I wasn't really in the reading until this Bergen came. She always had suggestions for me and she's always nice. And. When we really have nothing to do, she would always have suggestions. Of what to read in the same way that I'm.
Uh, I want to thank everyone for being here. I am to- totally, totally impressed that how articulate. Especially for being well behaved. And uh, I don't want to tell you what I was as expected. I just want you to know, we're taking all your comments. We'll be looking at them and uh, they're, they're appreciated. So uh, very shortly, you should be hearing uh, us. Uh, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our. Meeting.
Very exciting.
And we'll see if that sort of thing will close. Uh. Thank you, everyone.
Our meetings are open meetings. We want you to come back. You're talking ourselves. Always welcome.
Okay, we good, everyone? You're welcome to stay.
Yes.
We'll, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break for people to get some. I had a hard time figuring out. Who was?
A lot going on.
That's what they have so much awesome names in their website. They already have. They live some, some like mines in California.
Oh, I don't know.
So because I have a over account that was linked with my previous.
It's like my telephone number's lost.
Exactly.
Thank you.
But then I'll ask about you. I mean, I just started. Writing in German, just like nonsense, because I, like, the only way I could. Safe child, this thing is bad. No. Good.
The chair would like to recognize Bergen. Or the two-minute limit. Okay, let's take a vote because uh, Bergen is not a town member. Yes. All those in favor allowing Bergen a couple minutes to speak?
Okay, although.
On roll call.
Hi.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Mary Lou, did you say?
Hi.
Lindsay?
Hi.
Jay? Uh, Jan?
Yeah, hi.
Nancy? Daffy?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Welcome, Bergen.
Thank you.
Yeah. You can say it if you like.
Um, thank you, welcome. Um. Okay, so I'm a little, I was under the impression I could speak and then that I couldn't. So I'm sorry if this is just joined in and out of.
Can I interrupt?
Out of place.
All, all board meetings are open to the general public. So you are the general public.
Thank you. At one point it was said.
Um, out of town.
Yes, a little bit special. I understood. I'm not, I'm not.
So your name and address.
Um, so Bergen Daly, um. Two oh two Country Club Way, Ipswich. Um. So again, if this sounds redundant, I apologize. Um, for those of you that do not know me, my name is Bergen Daly and I am the former Youth Services Librarian here at Langley Adams. Um, I'd like to start by sharing my immense gratitude. I'm just tearing up. For the families, the volunteers, the community partners, including the town administrator. And some of the library and staff and trustees for the support and energy given to youth services during my employment. You are the reason I tried to work through these obstacles for as long as I did. When I started this position, I was tasked with. From the director and the town administrator. And was excited and energized to work with the library team to build a welcoming, vibrant space for children, youth and families. To visit frequently for reading, gathering and learning as it is stated in the library mission statement. The community outside of the library walls eagerly embraced and collaborated to reach that goal. Sadly, it quickly became apparent that there was no internal team mentality of working together toward a common goal. Of bettering the library for the community. And in many cases, staffs were, staff were literally chasing patrons away. I bit my tongue for a while. But as soon as I started bringing up concerns. That is where I feel the tension amongst the internal staff began. Leadership did not motivate by example or words and in most cases turned a blind eye toward unprofessional and unkind behavior. Towards colleagues and or patrons. As time went on, I learned that the negativity and the dysfunction within the library was the worst kept secret in Gro- Groveland. And the high staff turnover, turnover rates reflected that. Me standing here today as a former versus a current employee was avoidable. And is due to the indifference, avoidance and a lack of management. To be clear, I have never asked for any of the staff to be let go. But I have advocated for help. And uh, um. The end, sorry, and I advocated for and agreed to mediation. And training for the entire team, myself included. The director refused these and other problem-solving ideas. What's done is done. But my hope is that changes will be put in place so that the cycle of driving out hard-working youth service librarians. And library assistants that care about the library and the community will end. The community deserves better and the taxpayers are funding it. Then, if all the children might be in the other room, but to my young friends that have brought joy to the library every single visit. I hope tonight we'll go home, read a good book, do something kind or helpful for someone and give yourself a huge pat on the back.
He hugs and smooches down here because she does, she's.
Who, who's speaking?
Hi.
Okay. That closed the open comment section. So I'm going to a regular meeting. Mary Lou?
Oh, hi. Um. Okay. I, I, I did. I did send everybody the monthly Bartholomew uh, report. I hope you received it. Um, and um, I, just this morning, I sent, I forwarded a copy of a letter. I mean, an email that I got from um. Bartholomew, um. Uh, is saying that Kathleen Colwacki has, has, uh, received a, um. Yeah. Anyway, she's been made a vice president and uh, so she's, um, I, she's been working for them for a while. So it's well deserved, I would think. I do have a question. Um, do we have? Do we have her scheduled next month?
Yes, we do.
Yes, okay. And I, my, I wondered, why do we need her to come again? Just a question for me.
We are going to have her review the change in the trust fund laws that the town is set to approve in April.
Yeah. They, okay, so, I mean, it seemed to me after, after last month's discussion, we only had one question about whether it had to go to the, whether it had to go before town meeting or not. We have had that resolved, it does. But it's going to happen anyway because the town has, is going to adopt that and, and I mean, the library is going to be included in that. So, yeah, I, is there, I mean, do we really have questions for her? I don't want to waste your time, is my question. Do we have questions for her that we, that, you know, that we might not want to do this?
Mary Lou, she mentioned three different options, three different approaches that she will take with the investment of funds. And so that's what we want to talk about. And she's prepared to.
Oh, yeah, but we, we can't do any of that until after it's been, until after it's been approved by town meeting.
That's correct.
I mean, that, we don't have to do that next month.
That's correct.
That, it would have to be accepted by town meeting, yeah.
Yeah, but she'll do, that'll tell us what the impact is.
Well, I guess that, yeah, yeah. Yeah. But, you know, all right, all right. That was, that's all I had.
Press report? Director's report?
Okay. I put the statistics as usual. Does anyone have questions about the Sark statistics?
Excellent numbers, excellent numbers. The adult programs really have drawn in a lot, too.
Yes. The Angela Lansbury one was 164 people. Oh, gosh, everybody. So.
Who does a wonderful job with those plans. The new plan for the book, all the authors to come, I think is something we've never done before on that scale. And I think that's amazing. It's going to bring in a lot of people, a lot of interest, a lot of excitement. That's the fan. It's going to take place both at the library and at town hall. And so the trustees, I think Bob had said it for all of us, would be glad to do anything we can to help.
Yes, and I will reiterate that to her.
Participant of the library consortium because it's going to be.
Everyone can come. It's an open.
A big, big draw.
Yeah, yeah, it's an open program. Everybody can come, anybody.
It's amazing the number of authors she's got to come.
Yeah. Okay, so if there are another questions about Valerie the Warrants, 2427 was $4,660.43. There was nothing for 2429. I believe that was when I was out with COVID. So the total is $4,660.43. Your other, the flooring carpet update is the same as last month. They are, the bids are out. So Rebecca sent the information for the bids, which I can bore you along, but I don't think we actually have, like, the bids themselves.
The people that are here to update us on the part, we call it the property issues, more, more than that.
Replacing the flooring.
This is, this is a project that started months ago. But if anyone developed with contractors and approvals and all that, it feeds going and going. And the firmest date that's like yellow is early spring, whatever that means. But we're working with it. But what it means is it's going to be stiffy carpets, brand new. If you're familiar with the library, if you go down one aisle and you go to the right, you're stuck. It's like a maze. You can't get out. So we're, we figuring the whole floor space, so everything is going to be straight. We're also looking at some updates, they're starting in the pocket. So the effect on the town is maybe disclose the library a couple of days or up to a week. So all of the trustees have volunteered to do some amount of lifting.
I know it's the lifting.
I can point.
I don't think it's, we have movers.
Jan and I attended the, the arts program on Monday with you did some very interesting painting, so just to say that.
Yeah.
With part of this move, we probably will have a more inviting atmosphere to display some of this. As, and you look, look at us today, space is definitely an issue with, with the library. What it translates to is money, 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 and town approval. Approval, money, money, money. So bear with us on that score.
Okay. Any questions from the board about that? It's really the same as last month, except for the bids are out.
If you can keep us, you know, if you needed someone to.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. We do. We do. They are, but they're not the library-specific one. They're the.
Oh, I thought we went with the library.
The cheaper one is in li, more library-specific, so there will be a lot of organizing the materials back, I'm pretty sure. I think. I, I need to double-check on that, so. And then there's just a reminder, meeting with FinCom, February 28th at 5:00. I mean, if you can, it's just Bob would need to post it.
What's the date?
February 28th at 5:00.
What day of the week is that?
Wednesday. It's okay. I'm all the way down here and.
It probably should be posted just as a safeguard because if a quorum attends, then that would be considered a meeting, so doesn't hurt to post it.
Exactly. You're saying post it as a meeting?
I post it as a meeting because if a quorum shows up and we're discussing library issues with the finance committee, then it would be perceived to be a meeting of the Board of Trustees, so it doesn't hurt to post it. Even if three trustees show, it still doesn't, doesn't hurt to do it as a safeguard.
Yeah.
Will do.
Thank you. And it's, it's really Darcy who presents the budget to the, to the finance committee and she does an excellent job of it. And we're there for backup and support. And to beg.
And then I just wrote a list of a lot of upcoming programming for all age groups separated into youth and adults. A special thank you to trustees Lindsay and Laurel, who will be leading a lot of programming coming up. I think they will be fantastic.
One of those, still list that I'm going to be hosting.
Which one? All right. I will go in and correct it on the calendar.
What was the question?
I think there's just, I need something to correct something on Asabet.
Oh, okay, fine.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, and thank you, Jan, because Jan has started keeping the children's room refreshed. She started today. Is putting together crafts as well. Also, thank you to Joan Forrest, our volunteer, who is doing Take It Makes every week. Those will be in the children's room available.
In that vein, can I just mention, because you're down to staff, if you need me or anybody else, you can have, I'll definitely see, but if anybody else on the board, it'd be a body in within the building.
Thank you.
And I've already volunteered to work with Darcy on the grants and the project management part of it.
Yes, thank you very much, Kathy.
Are you going to, do you want to tell the board about the confirmation from the cultural council on our approval?
Oh, yes. So Bergen had requested 1950 from the cultural council. We were awarded $1,000, which is a high amount from them. I think the only other one that got that much was Pumpkin Fest, so. Thank you to Bergen for submitting that and thank you to the cultural council and.
We'll follow up with that letter of thanks as well, Darcy.
Yes, yep. And then, of course, the adult, upcoming adult programs through, as much as I could fit through March 4th, are also on here. Lots of great hybrid and virtual programming.
It has amazing programming and the thing, she seeks out, she seeks out donations and she seeks out grants and, and carries it off with other communities, which is a really wonderful thing.
So, take news all around. If anybody wants a list of it, there is a, there are copies over there. But I will correct the, the thing on Asabet. I will take care of that. Yeah, I know, I caught one today, too, so. All right, so I think that's it. Any other board members have any other questions for me?
Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darcy.
The next item that says trust fund change in the town of Groblin. That should have come on and all it was, was the question as to whether the library needs to approve this change independently or in conjunction with the town. And as it turns out, the town approves this change and it covers the library. So we're not necessarily, we're not supposed to do anything, so that's our, our close.
Bob, would we need a vote among the trustees for the trustees where our, our funds are separate? Would we need a vote among the trustees, which these funds are under the care, control, and control of the trustees? We may need, and I don't think it would hurt to have, after our March meeting or at our March meeting, a, a vote to move to, to take part in that.
Okay, we'll put it on the agenda and vote on it then.
Yeah, because our funds don't fall under the town.
And I have a question. You just said the three options. Will we, is the town deciding for the whole town? Is this the one option or do we still have that?
No, no, no. The, the basic change is the, the state of Massachusetts publishes a list of companies and entities that a municipality would include in their trust funds. And it's very, very limited. What this does is it opens up to a broader category of companies that towns can use. So it's removing a very restrictive list that hasn't been updated for 10, 15.
A hundred years.
Since, since Patoslaw. So it's, it's opening up, it's, it's, the, the state is going into the new age. You, you will never see a Facebook and an Amazon on, on their list, whether it's on now or not. So that tells you all you need to know about our, our state.
Unless you're looking for a harness for a dinosaur, there are possibilities of that on their list. And, and we're going to have advice from Bartholomew as to which way to go with those investments with our goals in mind.
And that's under the purview of the Board of Trustees.
Right.
Yes, yes, definitely.
Absolutely.
Okay, now we move on to other.
I just want to just mention the program at town hall.
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention that Bob and I attended the program at town hall on Monday night where the awards were given for the children for the GMF Cola Bears. And I wanted to thank everybody who was involved with that, there were about a dozen people there and their parents who were very kind. And just wanted to mention that they're still on display if anyone wants to see, you know, the event, the Cola Bear art exhibit. If you go in town hall and go around the back where the video is, they're right there. So I just wanted to make that announcement that everybody.
And the lemonade and cookies are gone. The kids really enjoyed it. We have any comments?
I just wanted to, and that, comment about the petition that came forward. One of the things that we could address here tonight is the request about the changing the bylaws. We are governed.
Laurel, can you speak up? Excuse me, yeah.
Okay. Did you hear the beginning?
Sorry, I'm.
Okay, what I, I'll start again. What I would like to address is one of the requests that the petition put forth was, um, the, I don't know the exact wording, but they were asking about, um, changing the bylaws. And we are governed by the Massachusetts Board of Trustees, or Massachusetts Board of Library.
Board of Library Commissioners.
And under there, it says, the trustee board employs a library director who meets the personal personnel minimum standards with state agent public libraries program and develops guidelines for staff selection. And evaluates life for library director's performance, which we just did in December. Anyway, but it's the library director who hires and supervises staff according to both board policy. And so we can't change the bylaws because this is from the state. This is from Commonwealth, you know, it's the Commonwealth. And so that's a hundred thousand, that's what I thought is, I mean, I could show you on the, it's the Mass.
Hi, Brenham. And we met with the town administrator about them. So we have a pretty good.
Not the bylaws from this, not the bylaws and not the, this is the Mass, we have a public, a library, the public trustees handbook, which we go by and the town bylaws. And then we have our own little bylaws, which it's more about how we, I shouldn't say little bylaws, it took forever to write. We have our own bylaws in terms of how the committee or the trustees board runs, you know, nine people. You're on for three years, you're elected, you're just thinking how, yeah, that, that type of thing. So I just wanted to address that. Is that something you could address right now? Question? Oh, wait, no more public, that's right, no more public. But I mean, that, that is what we need to follow. Even our bylaws, say we follow the town bylaws, we follow open meeting law, all of that through, you know, Massachusetts. And then we also are restricted to making, or the public trustee, the library. So that's that.
And I'd like to add one thing under other. Thank you for that, Laurel. We have an open meeting every month, 12 months a year, on the second Wednesday of the month. It's open to the public all the time. We're always looking for volunteers. We're looking for members of the Friends of the Library, the fundraising arm. The town doesn't and can't cover all of our expenses. So we count on donations and people who are willing to work for the library at Groblin Day and book sales and other functions. It's wonderful to see, to see so many people show up tonight and we hope to see you show up after that. Our director is evaluated in two open meetings every year by the board, both in writing and verbally. Everybody's welcome. They're open meetings. Thank you.
And I, can I say something also?
Sure, Mary Lou.
Mr. Chair, I, I know a lot of the people who attended tonight, you know, congratulated us on our volunteerism. And we are indeed volunteers, but we have to, we have to get signatures, we have to run for public office. And we are official public office holders in the town of Groblin. I mean, it's, it's not like that we just put up a hand and said, we're volunteer, we have to, we do have to run for office and, you know, hopefully some of you might consider doing that, too. And so the election is coming up and so that's something that you might consider doing to get involved and, and, you know, on the library trustee board.
I view the Board of Trustees as, among other things, an advocate for the library. We go before the town, you know, the finance, the, the town meeting as a board of directors. And I'm betting that the board of directors of the library will state something or express a need. And it carries a certain amount of weight. But in the back of everyone's mind is, oh, that's the board of directors of the library. We expect them to take that position. But if an individual from the town goes and basically says the same thing, you want to make a bet that that carries more weight with the town, whatever committee we're leading? So we appreciate you coming here and giving your, your input to us. But please give it to other places in the town. And you rave about the programs. They need to be funded. Forget the individuals. They need to be funded. They need to be supported. We don't have anywhere near the staff that we're moving. And that's one of our issues. We're struggling because if we didn't have any open positions, we would still be understaffed with the services that we need to provide. That in itself provides its own pressure, tension, explains maybe, not justifies, but explains some of what's going on. So we need your support. We need you to advocate for the library as a whole.
And I'd like to also add again, and I shouldn't be jumping in, but I'd like to advocate for support. You see the trustees, there's nine members. It's not just a couple of hours at a meeting every month. Many hours are put in, many, many hours as support staff. We all are quarried so that we can work with children, work around children. And we're, we have to be bonded. Anyone who handles the trust funds, that's quite an expense. And so it's not just a couple of hours. For some of us, it's almost a full-time job. Me, yes.
You understand, we're on the PTA, you're saying. We're just the Girl Scout troops, school council.
A PTA is full-time too.
Yeah, we know.
And you get the same kind of feedback.
But we're not the charge of our principals, the states with.
Questions, we get public comments over. We either email you or wait till the next meeting.
I, yeah.
You certainly can email us.
Okay.
Are there, is there a formal board response based on our testimonies tonight?
I think this is the first we've seen.
Okay, yeah.
And that's why I said, let me, I can respond to that one. Okay. Because I know that, you know, but that's why I was looking on my computer.
Yeah, right now, we, we have all your input tonight. We have all your input from the letters. And let me say one thing about the letters. I personally responded. And I did an automatic thing. And I hope you picked up on that. But that doesn't mean I didn't read them. It took me an hour and a half to do the automatic response because each one had to be individual because of the, the way they came in. So I missed my bedtime.
Yeah, we all. Bob, I have a quick question. It's Lindsay.
Yes.
Do we have a statement that we made on like some of the things that we are gonna do going forward? Didn't we have that for today?
No, we don't have it for today.
Okay. Just double checking. All right, thank you.
We, we, we've started a whole process. I mean, it's not, this isn't the first time we, we've looked at some of this stuff. We're looking at it.
Well, we had the executive session too. So, yeah.
Everything boiled up not quite two weeks ago. So give us a little time to turn down the heat, to respond responsibly and to give it, give it a lot of thought.
We appreciate that. We do have a question though. With everything that we've kind of talked about today and some of the requests that we put in our letter, I'm kind of asking and requesting Bergen's position. Has it been posted? And if it could be kind of held off from being posted while you review what we requested? Of course, it's not up to us, but.
Two, two things. I'm told it's being posted this week. The second thing, you really don't want to hold off on the posting because we don't know what the result is gonna be. So if we hold off and it takes, who's ever involved in this, a month down the road to get to resolution, which we don't know what that's gonna be, then you lost a month to see if there's a potential.
But everyone, everyone is able to apply for the position.
Is that something you guys can consider, the urgency of what we're expressing?
Yes. Because if your protocols change and your grievance policies change, I'm not speaking on behalf of Ms. Bergen, you know, I love her and talk to her all the time. I, if she applied and those policies were changed and something that she felt comfortable, that's what we're kind of wondering. Because if it takes two months to change the policies, then she didn't even get a chance to apply.
All we can say is everyone has, has the opportunity to apply once the job is posted. That's all we can say. We can't address any other personal issues.
Well, just, dot, dot, dot in the letter. We request urgency, just in case this could magically be rainbows and uniforms, as we hope at all.
You can say anything you wish.
I want this over. Lifetime secretary here.
Thank you, Laurel.
And I, my plan was to just come here and admit and listen and I.
Same with PTA. And then we all became president, vice president, communication chair. Oh, that happens.
I do hope, I'm going to try in March to do some studio hours. They're not gonna be Bergens. But I gotta keep working here, right before Bergen, Kenny, my, just doing, juggling, trying to do something.
We do appreciate the stepping up in her absence and know that is.
So that's, that's, right now, we're trying to do something so that the programming isn't totally gone and to keep, keep us coming to the library. And we're working, so we want everything.
Are we ready to wrap up our meeting? Let me, let me again thank everyone. And we will look at all the responses. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
I second it.
Okay, let me get my infamous checklist. Before I get lost. Laurel? Lindsay?
Hi.
Mary Lou?
Hi.
Jan? Nancy?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Lee?
Abstain.
Bob?
Yes.
You abstain?
Yeah.
You abstain, Lee?
I abstained on that one, yeah.
What a state.
All right, I'm ending the recording.